Good evening, I'd like to call to order the October 28th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Clerk Boe, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Spatafor?
Present.
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Pelli Vanoglu?
Present.
Councilmember Brown?
Present.
Councilmember Cost?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Present.
Eight members present.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have the minutes of the October 14th meeting. Vice President Hussein?
Sure, I will move the October, sorry, 14th meeting minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, at this time, we are to public comment on agenda items. If there's anybody from the public that would like to come down to the well, you have up to three minutes to speak, and please present your name for the record.
Randy Dykeis, 418 North Sycamore. I'm here to strongly oppose the reappointment of Sandy Zirkle to the BWL Board of Commissioners. Ms. Zirkle has been on the board since 2006. After 18 years, it's time for her to step aside and allow someone new to be appointed, someone with an upheaval in the energy world. BWL now, more than ever, needs new viewpoints, new perspectives, and a fresh outlook. The world in 2024 is vastly different from the one in 2006 when she was first appointed. After so many years on the board, Ms. Zirkle seems to have confused her role as the member of a governing body with acting as a de facto member of the management team. Rather than going along with every proposal that management makes, she should be working to make sure that what is proposed is actually in the best interests of her constituents, who are the residents of the city of Lansing. During the recent consideration of a large rate increase to water and light rates, Ms. Zirkle asked no probing questions of management. When dozens of residents appeared at the public hearing to speak out against the rate increases, Ms. Zirkle did not address any of the concerns. At the meeting on August 27, the minutes show that Ms. Zirkle made no comments about what was said at the hearing by her constituents. Nor did she question management earlier in the year when a fossil fuel burning power plant was touted as part of BWL's Clean Energy Plan, even though that plant will emit a host of noxious gases and compounds. Later, when management admitted that the plant really should not have been included in the energy plan, the Clean Energy Plan, Ms. Zirkle did not seek to learn why it was that it had been put in there in the first place, or why management has suddenly reversed itself and the decision to include it. The role of a commissioner should be to hold management accountable and provide transparency for the owners of BWL, who are the residents of the city of Lansing. Ms. Zirkle does not do this and should not be reappointed to another term. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Steve Perry. I'm the business manager of IBW Local 352 that oversees the labor contract for the Board of Water and Light. As a 20-year employee, I've been to countless BWL Commissioner meetings and have seen firsthand the leadership mentoring and historical perspective that Sandy Zirkle brings to the table. She has helped board members with insight as well as worked hard for what is in the best interest of our ratepayers and provides the experience necessary to help with the struggles that we have as a utility. I've seen her demand clarity and transparency on behalf of the ratepayers. She has always welcomed new perspective and innovation while maintaining the reliability standards of the BWL for its ratepayers. She has been a stable leader in providing continuity and integrity to our board. And I've seen this firsthand. You know, when we had our rate increases, the conversations that we had were ad nauseam. I mean, we had vetted this through numerous things, trying to figure out the impact that it would have on the community, the impact it would have on our ratepayers, and the ultimate impact it would have on our utility and the labor members that serve that utility. There are 500 families that we have to consider. There's a ton of unintended consequences that come with any decision-making as a part of being in leadership, and Sandy was directly a part of making sure that we didn't leave any stone unturned. I'm not saying we were flawless in our approach, but she was definitely an integral part of that, and I hope that you guys can see that continuity, leadership, mentoring, it all matters, and she provides that to our board. Thank you very much.
Loretta Stanaway, and I would echo everything that Randy Zeich has said and add that, you know, it's my opinion, I don't care who you are, and I don't care what you've done, if you've had close to 20 years in any kind of a position, it's time for you to make way for a new person. Because you get set in your ways, you learn to avoid questions, you learn to dodge accountability, and we have seen consistently from Sandy Zirkle over these years, she functions as a yes person for the board, she does not function as a voice for the ratepayers, and they include people that live other than in Lansing as well. You don't have a legacy right to stay in a seat. You have to earn that right, and I don't believe she has. Then also, on the purchase of property for 701 West Jolly, we had perfectly good voting facilities. We tore them down, and now we're asking the public to come up with $600,000 or thereabouts to build something new or buy something new and renovate something new. We have got to stop tearing down functional facilities so that we can build something nicer, newer, and neater and cooler and cleaner. We have to learn how to make do with what we have and fix it and make it work. That's all.
Good evening, council. Oops, now I gotta find it. Doing this from my phone. You have already received my email concerning the housing proposals that will be coming before you, and I'm very concerned. I sent the email because it's easier to express through an email, given we only have three minutes here. Before you tonight are several housing proposals, I encourage you to think how your decision will affect the many neighborhoods within our city for the years to come. I am not for or against some of these proposals, but please keep in mind, many residents have invested in their neighborhoods, and your decision will have a huge impact on their areas. The decisions you make will affect the quality of life for every resident, the people who elected you, so it is important to reach out to as many as possible. No, you will not get many to attend a council meeting for various reasons, but each of you should reach out to them. Some of these proposals, I believe, are already on the books.
Excuse me, Nancy?
Huh?
I apologize, I didn't mean to cut you off, but this is not on the agenda for Committee of the Whole. I'd be more than welcome to have you come to the council meeting this evening.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry. I thought it was, sorry.
Do we have any additional public comment? Did we have any online? Okay, we didn't have anybody online either, so we will move on to our presentation. We have a presentation by Lansing Board of Water and Light, General Manager Dick Pethley. Would you please come down to the well? Now you know the routine, make sure your green light's on, and I appreciate you providing all the answers to the questions that were already asked of you, so thanks for your time this evening, and I will open the floor to you.
Green light is on, thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. We are appreciative of the questions that were received on Monday, the 21st. There was 21 questions. Most of the questions had multiple questions embedded in them. After we reviewed the questions, I assigned them to the appropriate subject matter expert to start working on. We worked on them through the week, and on Friday, we met with the executive team and compiled all the questions, reviewed them, and packaged them up, and then we emailed them to council Friday and the Board of Commissioners, as well as posted them on our website so anybody could see them. And, you know, it was Friday, and I'm not sure everybody's had a chance to look at them all over a nice weekend, but at this point, if you have follow-up questions, I'd be happy to take them in an email so that we can get you very specific answers. And at this point, I'm going to ask how you'd like to proceed, Council President.
Okay, well, thank you for being here this evening. And last time, you were before with us, the questions that you couldn't answer, you had to them within five business days, and I think that was very, very well appreciated by our body, and I will open it up to questions from council at this time. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, thank you for being here, and I'm glad that we were able to do this format because we went from guaranteed two times a year meetings to, you know, unbeknownst, to me at least, maybe, I guess, one time. So I'm glad we're able to do this here. I want to follow up on some questions I had. One is, what is our current total clean energy percentage when we're grading it based on the 2030 and beyond goal?
The response is in the packet, councilmember.
Okay, so first of all, shout out to all the single parents out here because they do a lot, and I must say that I, my wife's out of town, I have my two kids, we had soccer all weekend, we had stuff all here, I got one there, and I'm gonna leave here to go pick up another one, so I didn't get to read all of it, and if it's in here, could you please tell me what that number is?
I'll have to look. Do you know what question you're referring to?
I want to know, since our goal is to have, is it 40 by 30%?
It's 50% by 2030.
Okay.
And we are on track to be at 53% by 2030, councilmember.
So what are we today?
Do you want to know what percentage by nameplate? Do you want to know reportable, or do you want to know actual? Your question has to be defined, and I'm happy to answer.
All three.
That's in the packet.
Okay, the one that is considered with the 2030 goal?
That would be 21%.
21%?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if 2030 is in five years and two months, approximately, one month, and isn't it true that there are no plans to increase the clean energy capacity that is built in right now?
No, that's incorrect. It's also spelled out in the packet, so I would suggest that it was a busy weekend, as you said, it'll take time to review it, it'll answer all your questions, and any follow-up questions, I'd be happy to do it. There's very specifics.
No, these are easy questions, though, that you should not have to refer me to a document for when you can just say, yes, it's a, and then something that's not a natural gas plant, because that does not count.
I guess we have to agree to disagree.
Okay, well, let me ask you this, then. So how are you going to be able to get that 21% to 50% in five years, based on what you have planned?
The packet explains it in detail, how we get there with wind and solar and storage technology.
Okay, so what is that? What's the plan?
It's in the packet, sir. I mean, if you would like, if the councilmen like, we can read the entire packet to you.
No, but I definitely would like...
I'm happy to do that, if that's what you're requesting. Zero heartburn.
So what percentages are those going to add to get to 50? I just want you to explain, because you came up with the rice plant plan where you bonded for clean energy projects, that bond that we're paying for with the rate increases, the one that's for clean energy projects, but the rice plant, correct me if I'm wrong, is the project that it's paying for?
No, that's incorrect.
Okay, so then, what are, how is a rice plant being paid for if it's not for the bond that we're, that we just levied on the people?
It's in the general fund, and all of the projects add up, so probably a very small percentage of it would be in there, which is also explained in the packet, sir.
In your press release here from February 12th of this year, it says that there are seven projects to be completed and four are already being worked on. What four are those?
I'll have to get back with you on that.
This press release is from the Board of Water and Light, and it says, Lansing Board of Water and Light details how bond issuers will help fund clean energy program.
I agree with that, yes, sir.
Okay, so that bond, aren't we, isn't it true that the bond is being paid for by the increased rates that has just been had?
A percentage of it, yes, would be correct.
Okay, isn't it true that this bond issuance is supposed to be to fund clean energy projects?
That's correct, yes, and support clean energy projects. That's an important factor.
So why is it paying for part of the rice plant?
Again, you have to support those. Renewables are intermittent. In January last year, we had two days of solar and three days of wind. If you were relying on that, you'd have darkness. The rice plants fill that void.
So by saying supporting clean energy programs, you basically have a permit and the ability to do natural gas or other fossil fuels to support clean energy?
Well, we have to refer to the bond, what was put in the bond, those were listed in the bond proceeds, and when the bond was written, as the packet says, clean energy hadn't been defined. Rice units weren't defined as not clean until after the bond was submitted.
Okay, so you're...
So we changed, once the law changed, we changed the designation, and as you said, we should be following in a previous meeting, the EU standards. EU still considers gas in certain instances. Now, they've toggled back to it being clean. Should we follow them?
So are you suggesting that by building new rice plant fossil fuel infrastructure that's going to be paid for by a 30-year life of the bond, you're suggesting that that somehow is a good thing for clean energy?
Absolutely. It allows you to move faster towards your renewable goals. You couldn't move there without that.
And you're saying that, that when you thought about this rice plant, or whenever the plans came to you and you guys stamped it, that you were going off of the definition that what you were creating, a rice plant without carbon capture, is clean energy by someone's definition?
No. I wouldn't say that.
So when you did build the rice plant, you knew that it was not clean energy?
Correct.
And then you tried to...
Yeah, the packet says that we don't refer to natural gas as clean energy, and I know you didn't have time to review the packet, but all these answers are in there.
Do you recall...
Hold on one second. Excuse me, Councilman Jackson. You know, I understand you didn't have a chance to read this packet, and I appreciate the amount of time and effort you guys...
We put 50 hours of labor into this, and we're glad to put another 50.
Put into this, and I'd be more than happy to call Mr. Pethley back here at a later date if you have time to review.
Sure. No, no, I'm definitely gonna review this, and I'm sure that if it's not, please make it part of the minutes records so that people in the future can review this too, but my question is, just to get some clarification, because some things still don't make sense. I just want to know, so at some point, because last time I was here, I said, isn't it true that natural gas is not a clean energy, and you couldn't answer that?
No, I chose not to, because I asked for you to put your questions in writing to send it to me so I can get you accurate responses.
Okay, but you're the CEO and the number-one man who comes up with everything for those...
I've heard that from you before.
For those 500 families that keep getting referenced, all these things, it's all up to you. The Board of Commissioners, I've been to several meetings, and like has been said, there's very little comment on especially some of these very serious things.
Now, I take issue with that. If you attend a Cowor Finance meeting, they are very in-depth and last for lengthy amounts of time. This board only says yes after we answer all their questions.
Maybe a finance meeting, but definitely not a new generation for whatever it says here, the biggest planned growth in 140 years. Definitely no conversation about that, because I was there when that IPR was unveiled, and then we had to figure out what rice plant meant altogether. But either way, I'll slow down because I can see that we're at 21%. I'm glad you were able to say that without having to refer to the number of questions it is, and I'm glad to hear that the plan to get to 50% is in this document.
It is, sir.
And that that rice plant is officially being designated as not clean energy by the Board of Water and Light. Oh, and did you figure anything about carbon capture yet when it comes to that? Like what the plans are to put it in there to comply with the state law?
The state law requires carbon capture, but there's off-ramps, so we're waiting to see if the technology cost comes down. We have plenty of time to, for that technology to advance.
So you would rather look for an off-ramp, so that like off-ramps all the emissions without getting it captured?
No, I'd like to look for alternate clean energy sources and have carbon captures.
Okay.
Less expensive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do we have any additional questions or comments from council? Councilman Brown?
Thank you so much. Thank you all for being here. Just wanted to say thank you for, again, as President Garza said, answering all the questions, it took quite a bit of time. Also, thank you, Mr. Pethley, for meeting with me to answer any questions that I've had over the last couple of months, as well as Kelvin Jones and Brina Pugh for the work that we've been able to do with the constituents. So thank you for providing the information that I needed.
Okay, any additional comments from council? Councilman Hussein? Vice President Hussein?
Yeah, I would echo that. As a matter of fact, I just met late last week with Mr. Kelvin Jones and Brina as well, and Kelvin actually pulled me down to the well to give me some answers that he didn't have at that time, so I certainly appreciate that. There's a lot of work that is done that's not incredibly public, right? And then we try as best we possibly can to be transparent with some of the information that we glean. We were actually meeting last week to talk about the South Lansing Transmission Project, but in any event, I certainly appreciate the work that went into this packet. It was incredible, and I have to be honest with you, I only got through about half of the packet. And so my suggestion would be, because the information is so rich, that we give folks some time to go through that, and then we certainly can, as leadership, reach out to folks at this day, and if there's a desire to bring Mr. Pethley back after we've all had an opportunity to consume this, we would extend that invite at that time.
Absolutely.
Uh, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. Looking at number seven, what expenditures does Board Water and Light anticipate for building new electric generation and storage capacity? The upcoming, the answer, well, okay, the whole question, please provide detailed expenditure plans for each new generating source by year and megawatt of capacity for each year 2025 through 2050. The answer is, the upcoming IRP, a 20-year study covering 25 to 2045, will answer this question. So that means you don't have an answer to what's going to be generated to complete the project, to make the goals in five years, because it's an upcoming study that has to be done.
And the study period that you requested went from 25 to 30. We have a plan through 2030, as I previously stated.
So is the answer part of a plan that's already made or a plan that has to be made?
The plan to get to 53% renewable energy by 2030 is fixed in concrete.
It's a plan, it's made?
It's made, yes, sir. 3% above the required limit, which some of our customers aren't happy with because it's a very expensive plan.
Thank you. Councilman Cost?
Thank you, President Garza. Just quickly, two things. I know that BWL has a large amount of solar panels ready to roll at a certain, I won't give out where it's at, I saw them. Do you have a target date when those are going to be deployed?
Absolutely. We have four locations. It's much cheaper to build the solar in our service territory because we're one of the only utilities that owns its own transmission, so when you build outside, you have to pay to ship that in, like a trucking cost, so to speak. There is only finite space in Lansing, but we've identified four large locations that aren't useful for anything other than solar. They're the properties we already own, zoning won't be an issue. We plan to break ground, probably, all the panels, as you said, are in stock. They were brought in in December. The land is, most of it's been purchased or leased, depending which route we went on it, and we're waiting for construction to start. I would expect some of you to start seeing construction around November. There's certain areas we're going to be building, and we want to reach out to the homeowners and talk to them to show them what's coming. I'm not expecting any issues there because it's undeveloped land out of their site, but as a courtesy, we want to talk to them. So by November, a couple of sites should be up and under construction, and we'll keep the council looped in as we make those announcements.
And then, do you know what percentage that'll increase, the 21% we have right now of renewables, once those are all online?
Yeah, I can hazard a guess, because the local solar is pretty small. If, in the packet, I believe, it's something like 150 or 60 megawatts to bill out down the road. These are six to 10-megawatt sites. It takes about 10 acres for one megawatt, so the large ones will unfortunately will stop to be out of our service territory. We're under negotiations with a large one just north of our service territory. Those will bring in substantial amounts, and as well as the wind project is also outside our service territory. It's farther north up in the thumb area where we already have a presence, so those will be a substantial increase. I would just, I'd happy to respond, you know, I imagine it takes 4% or 5% up, if you could just take that as an educated guess.
Okay, and then the last thing I have is, over the weekend, last weekend, I was tagged in a billing issue. Some people still like to go to the drop box and put their check in, and there's...
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and Brianna was great about helping this customer, you know, because he was, it was late because of the processing, three to five days, which wasn't apparent apparently to several people. He got popped with a deposit as well. Is there any looking at maybe a different way of doing drop boxes for folks that still use that check and, you know, getting it processed better than three to five days? Say they're dropping it off on the, you know, due date?
Brina did loop me in that, and they are taking a look at that. They also share with the customer other payment methods that might fit their need, the kiosks, maybe the Qualideries or the Walk-In, which is rebuilt up. I do know that in that instance, they were able to waive some of those fees for the customer to help him, but they continue when they get these kind of concerns to see what they can do to make it easier for our folks that still drive in. Don't think there's a solution developed yet, but they are looking into it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. You did help the customer, and they were grateful for that, so I appreciate that, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Cost. I guess I would like to say I appreciate you being here. Thank you so much for putting this packet together. I haven't been able to dive through it all as well. However, you've always been accessible. I met with Kelvin Jones and Brianna Pugh last week as well to talk about the South Reinforcement Transmission Line Project. Could you speak a little bit on that, like what our residents are expected to see, like on Jolly and MLK? Is that sort of progressive?
It'd be very high level, but, you know, the reason for those projects are, first of all, that traditionally, everything came out of a central location, the Accret Station. Your whole city power came out of there, and as it grew, you built all the plants. Now, as you bring in renewables, they come from outline areas, so you're having to build a reverse infrastructure to bring those back in, and so that's why we build a line from, right now, the city is encircled by what's called 138,000 KB line. That's the very high voltage, the really tall poles you see. So a few years ago, we completed one going from east to west, and, you know, those poles are pretty tall, and, you know, we're looking to do a little better-looking pole as we go north to south here. And I know they've been looking at ones that look more like a tree trunk, not sure where they're going on that, but it'll be similar to that. I know they've procured the right-of-ways to get down through there with the necessary homeowners, and construction's going to start. We've talked to council others over the last couple of years, but we thought it was time to, you know, when the trucks show up, you'll start getting the calls, so I ask Kelvin to reach out before the trucks show up, and we can show people what the pole will look like. The ones that signed easements, they know, but it's a neighbor maybe across the street, wow, I didn't know that was showing up in the right-of-way, but it's necessary to bring this energy back in. It also helps, weather patterns are changing, we're seeing storms that we haven't typically seen, so we want to strengthen the grid so that if we lose, in the past, if you lost that 1 through 8 line, you could lose the whole city. Two years ago, we divided it in half, that's half the city, and now we're doing a quarter section so that under these extreme storms that we're seeing, we can minimize outage time, and so, but to follow up... we can minimize outage time and, uh, so, but to follow up, we can send you pictures of what the poles will look like, the routing again, you know, because you're busy and it's probably been two years since you've seen it and Calvin's supposed to be, sounds like he's doing what he needs to reach out to to show you because, you know, sign it up for a, you know, a nice easement payment and then seeing what's coming. Sometimes it could be some buyer's remorse there and we'll want to help try to work through that, but it is necessary to get that north to south line in so that we can start bringing power in from the north. 27,000 customers still get energy through Accra Station. Now, there's no production there, but it's a huge switching house. We need to get out of Accra Station so that we get into these modern substations so that outages are reduced in their duration, which we do have some of the top restoration rates in the state right now.
Okay, thank you. So, um, regard, regarding, um, the, the erection of those poles, when, when will those start? When do you anticipate those going up?
I'll have to get back, but I think it's in the very near future because we usually reach out to the affected homeowners and council members a month or two, so it's fresh in their minds. So I'm assuming within a couple of months, the trucks will start rolling. But I, I know that my staff is taking some notes in the back and we'll get back to you in a timely manner.
All right. I, I appreciate that. I think council, uh, Vice President Hussein and myself are going to have another joint constituent meeting. We'd love to have you guys come and present-
Absolutely.
To, uh, you know, open that up to the South Lansing residents.
The engineering, the designers can, can be there to rain folks and like I said, you know, it'll, it'll be a little shock. It'll, it'll change the landscape. It's, uh, it's necessary, uh, you know, to, to get out of the, uh, the business. When we close those coal plants, we knew this was coming.
Thank you. Do we have any additional comments? Uh, Councilman Spatterford?
Uh, Mr. Pethly, thanks for being here. Um, a lot of my day job involves energy and I, I work in that sector and hear constantly about how well-run our utility is and how we take care of our residents. And we struggle between those three tenants of reliability, sustainability, and affordability. And I think the board and the commissioners, while there's been a lot of accusations in, in public and spaces about saying, yes, I think they work towards trying to balance those three pieces, which you don't get out of consumers' energy or the DTE power. You, you don't, you don't get that out of, out of a non-city-owned utility. So I appreciate when you all come here with answers to questions that have been very carefully written and thought out, um, to, to really put a lot of the concerns this council has aside when we start thinking about appointments and, and things that, that, that work with the board. So I appreciate the work that goes on at BWL. We heard a lot about rates when, when the rate, rates went up. That was not fun for a lot of people, but when you start to look at the investments you're making in this packet, mentioned being one of the largest battery supply or storage facilities in the state of Michigan, leading the charge on battery storage, which has been one of the big hurdles to renewables. And I've appreciated the amount of time that people behind you and the people that are behind them and behind them and everyone, um, involved in the BWL has put into trying to figure out how to make the Lansing Board of Water and Light a key component to the state's renewable energy goals. Because I think it's important to also remember, we don't just supply power to our residents. We're part of a great, a big network of, of electricity generation and we're important to that network. And the work you all do to try and keep it affordable, while keeping an eye on that sustainability goal, 53% by 2030, uh, we're still watching you skeptically, but it, it looks like there's a plan there and I appreciate the work that's gone into that.
I assure you that, uh, we will not miss that target. We are ahead of that target right now.
Great.
You know, you'll see a lot in the next few months as the solar arrays are going up. We get the, the wind is a little harder right now. Nobody wants wind, but, um, back to the previous comment too, it, it is an edict of this office that every customer, uh, the 157,000 meters we have, every customer's responded to within 24 hours. And I don't think you'll find another utility will say that. Sometimes unfortunately the answer isn't exactly what they want, but they do get treated with respect and they, they do get an answer no matter where that call comes in. So, and also the Public Service Commission is using the Board of Water and Light standard for the, let's just say, two other large utilities are going to be adopting, you know, what we do for reliability.
There's a reason our downtime is measured in minutes and not, not hours and-
Yes.
And we're proud of that here in the city. So thank you.
We're 10 times under our nearest competitor for restoration time. Our leading cause of outage is squirrels and we like the squirrels.
All right. Well, thank you. I don't see any further questions from the body. Very much appreciated tonight. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Happy to follow any additional questions.
Okay, we'll move on down to our discussion action item. We have a C, Resolution to Reappoint Sandra Zirkle as a fourth ward member of the Board of Water and Light for a term to expire June 30th, 2028. Ms. Zirkle, if you don't mind, please come on down and make sure your green light's on and-
You want me to do it?
No, you just come, yeah, come on right on down there. Yep. Well, Sandra, I'm, I'm going to first start off by saying, I appreciate you. I mean, this is a, a, a position that's not paid. It's a volunteer position. You've been doing it for quite some time, but you've been doing a really good job at it and a lot of, a lot of the work is behind the scenes. So when people say, you know, rubber stamp or whatever word they say, um, I've worked with you in the past. I know, uh, what you're capable of doing, what you're not capable of doing, and I think you're doing a great job and have been doing a great job, um, for the Lansing Board of Water and Light as a commissioner, so.
I appreciate your remarks, Mr. President. Um, and I thank all the commissioners or council people here this evening for their time and effort, uh, to hear me. I did write a few, uh, comments down, um, and yes, I have been through two general managers. I have been through five internal auditors and three corporate secretaries, which is our responsibility as commissioners to hire and fire. So yes, I have been around and those are not easy things to do is hire and fire people, as you probably know. Um, what I feel is in the fiduciary duties as a commissioner is, is to be acting in our interest of the customers as best we can, exercising reasonable care and good faith in action and the decisions that we make and meeting legal and regulatory, uh, requirements. Commissioners are involved in developing, uh, Lansing Board of Water and Light mission and long-term vision to provide safe, reliable, and affordable service through public ownership and climate consciousness. Customers tell us that the most important issue that they have is that there's, they have constant service and reasonable rates. Through the commission and management's work today, BWL is most, one of the most reliable utilities in Michigan and has the cheapest residential rates compared to our competitors. In the strategic plan, planning, commissioners guide the strategic planning process and approve the final, uh, strategic plan. Some of the long, examples of long-term goals that I have been part of to guide the direction of BWL are getting out of the coal industry and having no coal available.
Sandra, could you pull the mic up to you just a little bit?
I'm sorry, sure.
Thank you.
We have this problem at the-
Is the green light on? You may have to press-
Yes. And I know we have problems with ours too, so occasionally. Um, getting out of coal, BWL has closed its last coal plant in 2022, setting goals for renewable and clean energy for BWL. I was a part of proving the BWL renewable energy portfolio, portfolio in 2017. It was the first one in Michigan at the time. The replacement of all led services of BWL was second in the country to do that. Under the budget as a commissioner, I take part in approving budgets and ensure the careful allocation of resources, resources for BWL health, healthy operation, investing in infrastructure, in improvements in projects. One of the first, uh, things that I'm most proud of is that was around when the First Step Program started, uh, with BWL. And as some of you know, it is a program where we take high school, um, seniors, bring them into the company, make them go through a long process of, uh, evaluation, um, putting portfolios together for themselves and they get hired, they are provided with a mentor and they also go through a safety program before they start with the BWL, just like every other BWL employee. And if I'm not mistaken, we have hired like close to 35% of the, the children that we put through the training. It was, it's a very good program. It's been modeled. We've given many reports on, on it, on the modeling program. Um, and they also end up getting an LCC scholarship, um, in their, so they can use it when they first go to school. Um, I guess the, the, two of the important things I've, I've learned as a commissioner is we, as commissioners, do not know how to build energy plants. We do not know how to make the water run and clean. We do not know how to turn the electricity, make sure the electricity is operating, but it's our obligation as commissioners and our responsibility to the citizens to make sure that the company has the right policies and practices in, in line to make sure that that happens to all of our customers every day. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, do we have any additional comments or any comments from council? Uh, Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Ms. Zirkle. And of course I'll start off by saying, you know, and it's no secret, I've opposed various commissioners coming forward for reappointment and otherwise based on, um, pretty much the 2030 by 50 goals and beyond. But I see that you've have 25 years at AT&amp;T and then 30 years at AFL CO. And then, um, I guess, so does any of that help you understand how the Board of Water and Light is going to get you to, us to 50% by 2030? And that, that's kind of, I, I already know that's probably a no, but do you want to answer?
Well, probably before you were born, the, the, the need for climate control was not a, a very valuable issue. Since I've been on the Board of Commissioners, it's become a, a, a very focused point. I understand the issues. I mean, you can see it every day, us being at 75 degrees in the middle of, you know, and at the end of October is not a normal situation for us. Um, so it's not that I can't learn or don't appreciate what is happening and, and encourage the board. And the board has come to us with pro, programs and policies, um, and their strategic plans to accommodate those issues.
Thank you. And that's exactly, it is becoming more focused as time goes on. 2006, natural gas was supposed to be a cleaner thing and that's no fault to you, but my point is, is that what have you done like educationally or self-educationally since you've been there or since climate change has became a major issue in your own words? What have you done to educate yourself on how to advance clean energy and restrict fossil fuels?
One of my last statements to you just now was, I do not know how to build a plant. I do not know how to keep the water safe for all of our customers. I do not know how the, the, to turn on that electricity every day. And the same thing goes with the solar, that, you know, that's the company's and we're responsibility. And I know that, uh, our vision plan, our mission plan all encourages that and there's daily, um, things coming out that will do, uh, answer those questions.
Thank you. They are coming out perhaps in the future. So I do want to talk about that strategic plan. You've been here since prior to 2020. Do you recall the 2020 strategic plan that was published by Board Water and Light?
No.
Okay. Well, it, it mean it's, do you recall there being a time where there was supposed to be no new fossil fuel infrastructure after you guys built, Board Water and Light built the previous natural gas plant, the one that everybody protested?
You're saying that was actually one of our strategic plans?
Yes.
Uh, I, I do not remember that.
Okay.
I don't know what year that would have been.
Is it 2020 because it's like every five years? Like you guys are working on one now for the future that's supposed to get us to the promised land or it's already done or something like that? Um, and you said something about a fiduciary. You do, you talked about the different storms and stuff. You are aware of like Milton and Helene is 90 million in damages and you sound like you agree that that is, uh, inflated from the climate crisis, how big those storms get, how they rapidly intensify. Sure, Michigan is a little bit safe, but you do see where there is like some financial impact beyond, I don't know, the near.
I, I'm not following you. What, what is the question?
Well, I guess, do you agree that as climate change gets worse, that the damages and the droughts and the effects will be greater that could affect finances even in our market?
We've had, in, in my time with the board, we've had two major ones. The number one was the winter storm in 13, uh, which some people didn't have power for, uh, going on 12, 13, 14 days. Um, because, uh, we, the, the staff, we were, we requisitioned the staff to go to great lengths to find out what were the problems. And the last storm we had was last fall and it was only, uh, three or four days. And it was three times as worse in the long, in what damage was happening than before. And yes, there, those storms, you know, obviously Florida's gotten three storms, yes. I have not the answer for what climate control-
Thank you.
You know, how to, you know, I-
I guess that was a little bit-
Just because I didn't go beyond-
I apologize for that question. That was a little bit too broad. But I guess my last one is, did you have any, like, say-so about the IFP that came out and the various hundred-plus different, um, responses and choices about which one was chosen and why as a Board of Commissioner?
For what? The strategic plan?
Well, for this-
The budget?
For this new generation of power that's coming up from the various programs like the Rice Plant, et cetera.
Yes, we get monthly reports on, you know, how much each one of our projects is costing us and, uh, where they're in in status. So we know basically where all of our construction and projects are, are at almost monthly.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Do we have any additional comments or questions from council? Uh, Councilman Cost?
Thank you, President Garza. Um, I just want to talk a little bit about rate increases with you. You were the acting chairperson, um, during that meeting, according to the meeting minutes, when the rates were increased this year?
Uh, yes, I was put in that position for the meeting.
Okay. And, um, you had commented that all of the correspondence would be read before putting forward resolution. Um, was all the correspondence read?
Yes, we had like 28, uh, correspondences and, uh, they were all read according to whether they were regarding, uh, the rate increase or whether it was regarding our new construction in the rice factory. Each one of them were, were put in that category and each of them were responded by staff.
Okay. And each one of them responded?
No, there was 29 or 30 of them.
Which staff member responded?
I chose as the, the chair to talk with the corporate secretary and we agreed to put them in, not read each one and say, yes, referred and replaced on file, uh, but we did categorize them, whether or not that they were the rate increase or whether they were regarding the new rice, uh, rice machine.
Did anyone write in favor of the rate increase?
Uh, there, there might have been, I, you know, I'm not going to lie, there might have been one or two that they understood, um, but the vast majority of them were opposing the rate increase.
Okay.
And we understood, as commissioners, we understood that this is the highest one that we've had in, in a good many of years. We didn't have it most of COVID and when Dick and the staff brought us what their plans were, the water mains were falling apart, um, much worse, that they had to recoup in order to make sure that these projects were being done. And we also went through all the grants that we've got. Uh, we have a, a new grant writer, writer on staff that helps, uh, with all the other, help of the other staff putting grants and that has been a great asset to, uh, what the BWL can do for its customers.
So in 2014 for water, um, that was an increase of 9% that year. Um, and I believe you were serving on the board at that time. Um, it took the service charge $12.20 and then, uh, .128 cents for CCF of water. Um, today we stand at 1736, um, plus 383 for two CF, CCFs of water and then $6.28 for anything over two. Um, on top of that, the service charge for electrical in 2014 was $10 a month and kilowatts under 500 was 11 cents, 12 cents. Um, now we're at, um, $21.75 for the basic surcharge. Um, you also have peak hours, non-peak hours. Um, and currently our- Currently, our off-peak hours are 14, roughly 14 cents, and 16 cents for peak hours. With wages that have been stagnant, how, how do you personally feel that the rate increase was justified?
Oh, because we hadn't done one in years, and during the COVID period and for a while afterwards, the cost of materials was out of this world. They didn't even know how to keep up with it. I talked with the CFO on a regular basis, and all the materials were just going sky high, and they had to do it.
Wasn't there an increase in '22?
Yes, it was still, I mean, we were still in, basically in the COVID period. We were getting out of it in '22, but yeah.
Okay, so there was a rate increase, because I thought you said that there wasn't one in years.
I, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't remember exactly what years that we did not.
All right, well, I appreciate that.
There did increase because of COVID.
And then, I'm just curious, on the, you've served for several years, and many, you'd like to see many of the new projects implemented. What, what are some of the projects that you look forward to getting across the finish line?
I'm sorry?
One of your questions in the packet, why you wish to serve on this particular board, I'm just curious, you had mentioned that you want to see some new projects get across the finish line, implemented, so I'm just curious what those were.
I'm still not getting you.
So i- in your application that you filled out, there's a question of, please briefly describe why you want to serve on this particular board. You responded, I have served for several years, and I would like to see many of the new projects that are being implemented. So I just wanted to know what those new projects were that you're looking forward to.
One of the projects that, you know, is the Rice machine, so that we can have the battery plant here and operating and bringing in the money from that. And also, I've talked to Mr. Peffley several times about the water mains, and he said that there was, they're breaking, and it's much more costly to repair them and when a breakage, because it has to be an emergency and it has to be done right now, so it's more costly to do it. So that was one of the other major projects. He want, we've got, we're trying to do, I might be wrong, but it's eight miles every year in water mains, because some of them are still from like the 60s.
And then, one final thing. It had been mentioned at one of the charter commission meetings, the idea of BWL taking over the sewer from the city with that charter change. How do you feel about that?
I'm sorry, what was the question about the charter committee?
So the charter commission had met, and there was a suggestion, I believe a few weeks ago, that BWL could potentially take over the sewer. That was a suggestion that was put out there. How would you feel if BWL were to take over the sewers from?
That would be up to Mr. Peffley to bring to us. I don't have a real opinion on whether we do it or not. I'm sure that Mr. Peffley is capable of doing it, but that has not been brought to me, and it was something that we'd have to discuss as a commission if that happens.
All right. I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Hussein.
Yeah, just real quick, I think to be fair to Ms. Zirkel, one of the reasons I think you looked a little bit confused when we started referencing the application is this application is actually from 2020. And so I'm going to ask that the administration, when we're looking at reappointments, that, you know, we're looking at an application that is, you know, some four years old, that we circle back with these folks and ask them to resubmit. I guess I'm going to ask you, has anything changed from 2020 that would affect your eligibility for this particular commission? No?
No.
And then I want, I think there were some great, great questions asked, hold on a second, some great questions asked tonight, I think you held up rather well. But I do want to address this idea that we've heard at the podium a few times, that somebody should step aside because they have been on a particular commission for however long. I think that is a dangerous, dangerous conversation to have. I remember when I first came on the council, and, you know, I was new, and I had, you know, lots of, tons of great ideas, I thought at the time, thought I knew how to operationalize some of those. And let me tell you, I spent a lot of time in Carol Wood's office, at the city level, at the county level, a lot of time with Vic Salantino. At that time, I think my first year on council, councilwoman Wood was in her 17th year, Vic Salantino was in his 18th year as a commissioner. And they really helped me quietly, because they're more workhorse than showhorse, quietly operationalized a lot of my ideas. I think the, I think the magic sauce really has ingredients of fresh new, right, ideas and faces and things of that nature, mixed with folks that have good, strong institutional knowledge and are willing to stay current, wanting to stay current. I talk with my students all the time about growth mindset, so for somebody to come to the podium and say that, you know, somebody, because they were, you know, initially appointed in 2006, for us to assume that they had done zero learning in that time, zero growing in that time, zero evolving in that time, I think it's quite the assumption. And I know, because I have worked with you, you are always incredibly accessible, you are transparent, you do ask good questions, you do work behind the curtain. And again, I know you as more of a workhorse than a showhorse, and maybe that served as a bit of a detriment tonight to you, right? That maybe you're not a little bit more public with your work. So what I would suggest is maybe over the next term, maybe, maybe try to get out to some of those contact meetings that we have, maybe share some of that information in a more transparent way. But keep working hard, because I know you're doing a good job, and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Yes, it's, when I heard that, it was like, somebody works for 20 years, okay, that's too much, you know, we got to get somebody new in here that, no, you know, we all have our, our limits, but I feel that I have tried to help other commissioners, because those first couple of years, as you would know, as councilpeople, the first couple of years are like a fog. You know, you got to figure out what your job is, what your responsibilities are, who you can talk to on this, and I try to do that with new ones that come in.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Zirkel. I appreciate you being down here. And just for, just for true transparency, like typically, we don't bring reappointments down here. I know that, you know, when I talked to you, you said you wanted to be down here, you're planning on being here anyway, so you wanted to come and have those tough conversations. So very much appreciate, keep, keep the, keep it, keep going what you're doing, you're volunteering, it's not a paid position, and you are a mentor. As these new commissioners are onboarding, you are working with them, and you're making sure that everybody is in sync on that, on that commission. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, and Vice President Hussein.
Sure. So I would move the resolution of reappointment, this is for Sandra Zirkel as the fourth ward member of the Board of Water Life for a term to expire June 30, 2028.
Okay, we got a proper motion in place. Do we have any additional comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, motion passes. All right, moving on down to Resolution D. Reappointment of Paul Collins as an at-large member of the Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Board of Commissioners, term to expire June 30, 2027. I know Mr. Collins is not here this evening. We did review his application. This is a regional position, no issues with attendance. He's an attorney specialized in energy and environmental law, and this term, like I said, would be to expire on June 30 of 2027. Do we have any comments from council? Seeing none, Vice President Hussein.
All right, I would move the resolution of reappointment for Paul Collins, as the chair stated, for a term to expire, expire, sorry, June 30, 2027, for the Lepha Board of Commissioners.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, moving down to E, Resolution Setting a Public Hearing for Principal Shopping District Assessment, Special Assessment Rule. Do we have our city assessor here, Jennifer Seisberger?
Here.
Oh, yes. All right, well, thank you for being here. First, I'm going to, I'm going to call on our, on our internal auditor. Do you have any comments or anything you want to speak on regarding this resolution?
I spoke with Jennifer and went over this.
Can you turn your microphone on?
It is on screen.
Green light?
Yes.
Okay, can you pull it closer?
I already spoke with Jennifer last week on this and went over it. Last year, there was a comprehensive plan review, and there was a recommendation of 5% increase to 24, 25, based upon inflation and rising costs. This plan is putting it back to 3% annual to even this year in 2028. Just know, what has already been said here, noted here, is that it's normally billed on October 1, however point in time that we're in, it will be added to the December tax bill for 2024.
December tax bill, tax bill of 2024? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And this is a, no, what's the word I'm looking for? Nonprofits are being charged with this, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, do you mind just giving a quick rundown of it? I know he kind of did the same, but.
Certainly. Well, first off, I'd like to thank you for all of your efforts in getting this pushed through. For my lateness, I do apologize. And.
I see you noted on the calendar for next year, so.
You better believe I did. And I'm ready for it. And I appreciate all of the help. I believe Councilmember Cox found an error, and we got that corrected before it got submitted. So what this is, is a special assessment for the Old Town area that helps promote and bring in business to that area. They, they put on festivals and various different things to help those businesses in that area generate some revenue.
Great, great. Do we have any comments from council? Councilman Cox?
Thank you, President Garza. So 2024 assessment, 5% increase, the memo that we have from you, that's.
That was the one you found the error on.
Okay, that's not accurate.
The rule reflects a 3%.
Okay, because I, I heard the internal auditor say 5% was.
That was, that was a comprehensive review on last year, recommendation. So it might have been passed in different houses.
Yeah, I think we passed 3% for each year, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, to cut it up and make it smaller. Okay, just wanted to make sure it was right.
That's correct. It's 3% on the rule.
Do we have any additional comments, questions from council? All right. Seeing none, Vice President Hussein.
All right, so there's a resolution to establish, sorry, a public hearing, this will be for November 18. So with that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Jennifer. All right, moving down to Resolution F, Act 5, 2024, purchase of property 701 West Jolly Road, City Elections Center. Clerk Swope, do you mind coming down? Appreciate you being here.
Sure.
Internal Auditor, Mr. Charles, do you have anything you would like to add to this?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. I've been through the agreements here, notice owned by, currently by the Salvation Army, and we're using a title company out of Farmington Hills. I was wondering if we were able to locate someone located in the city of Lansing at all?
The, I think the seller, pardon me, I think the seller generally finds a title agency, I, that is not part of our process to select title agencies. And the Salvation Army is, I think is based out of Salvation.
Okay, are we paying closing costs?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so that, that would be part of the closing costs, these?
Yes.
Title fees.
Pardon me?
These title fees are part of the closing costs.
Yes.
Is that correct? So we're paying firm Farmington Hills for the closing costs, even though the seller selected.
That's the real estate industry, is my understanding, yes.
Okay, all right, just understanding that. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Clerk Swole, mind giving us a quick rundown on this?
Sure. So, you know, as you may be aware, we used to be at the, no longer a building at 2500 South Washington to make way for the public safety complex that's being built. So we were moved to the Rio Elementary School, where we are renting space from the school district, which is being shared with several nonprofit entities. Being a, an elementary school, it is not an optimal layout or design for, for running elections. It does not have adequate parking for early voting that's occurring right now, and for, particularly on election night, when we have many election workers, voters coming and going, and various things happening. So it's just, it's not a bad space, and we appreciate the, working with the school district on it, but it's just not a great long-term space. So we did lobby to get funds from the legislature to fund an election center for the city of Lansing, so looking for a permanent home where we could buy, make, make sure that it fits our needs for the long term and, and just be there permanently. So we looked around the city and found this space. You know, we need between 13,000 and 15,000 square feet for our operations, and this meets that need. It's currently unused, it's vacant, the Salvation Army has moved out of it, it's their former distribution center. It has 90 parking spaces, which is like three times what I have right now at the, at the elementary school, and I wouldn't need to share them with, with other entities. Two entrances, and being our own space, as you may be aware, elections have heightened security these days, so we will be able to address those security needs. And being on Jolly Road is a highly visible location. If you ever went to the South Washington office complex, we were around to the back, we had to have about 20 signs in the parking lot to get voters to find the right place. And now being an elementary school, our public is trained to not walk into elementary schools, so sometimes they stand and knock on the door rather than walking in. But since it's not an elementary school, you know, it is a public building that they can just walk into, but a lot of folks just have that ingrained sensibility. So I'm looking forward to getting this in shape for what we need and moving to next year. So I would appreciate your support and glad to answer any questions.
All right, well, thank you, and I appreciate you being here. Vice President Hussein.
So I just want to be clear, so the, the grant that we received from the state to support election administration, that's going to cover the entire purchase?
That's going to cover the entire purchase and the renovations.
Pause. Do we have any additional comments from council? Councilman Spatterford?
Chris, this is completely, you don't have to answer it if you don't know the answer, obviously. Do you know how many bus routes run by that facility?
I know there is one.
Okay.
I, I don't know how many, but I know there is at least one that goes by. And in fact, there is a bus stop sign, or I found on a map that it, at one point was a bus stop, a stop itself, so I'm hoping to work with CADA once we're in to make it a bus stop.
And there is one right around the corner on Washington as well.
Great, thanks.
And it is war II, so.
It is in war II, President Garza.
Vice President Hussein.
Chris knows, I was, I was pretty upset that it was moving out of the Third War. But I will say that this, this site is way, I mean, way more visible, way more accessible. And so, and I was just having to sidebar Councilman Brown, I mean, this is a great, great location for this. I mean, it really is.
Okay, do we have any additional comments from council? All right, seeing none, thanks for presenting.
Thank you.
Stick around, be here in a little bit, right? Thank you. Vice President Hussein.
All right, so I will move the resolution, this will be up for final consideration tonight at the city council meeting. So with that being said, I would move Act 5, 2024.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, motion passes. All right, moving down, we are to Resolution G, city council meeting schedule. So I'll just run through this real quick. We worked with leadership here and our awesome office manager, Sherry Boak. So as you see in the red, it says, whereas, the committee of the whole will meet at 5:30 PM or at another time or date as determined by the new council, by the council president before all Monday council meetings listed below. We changed the Thursday, January 2 meeting to a Monday to go coincide with all the other Monday meetings for Monday, January 6. As you know, by charter, we have to have 26 meetings, we have to meet 26 times. On this, you will see there's 27 times. So if that's something that the, the future council president wants to eliminate one of those meetings, that's, that's up to them. But we do, we did try to keep it constant with two meetings per month, and we achieved that. Other than May, we were meeting three times, and that's just to prepare us for the budget, upcoming budget, and then we meet, you know, twice in December as well. So with that, I, I'll open up to any questions from council. Obviously, this is subject to change from the new council president, but, okay. Seeing no, seeing no questions, Vice President Hussein.
Sure. I would move the resolution as presented, city council meeting schedule for 2025. And just to be clear, I'm moving the, the resolution.
Just to be clear, I'm moving the, the resolution with the red eye. That's what we're adopting.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes. Okay, moving down to our last agenda item, we have H, place on file, executive order 202402? Establishing a policy for temporary flags to be displayed on the flagpole at David C. Hollister Lansing. Mayor Shore, do you want to touch on this real quick?
Yeah, we, we talked about this. There was a request for a policy because we were getting a lot of requests. And so we came up with a policy trying to make sure that, you know, we want to, we don't want to. We want to put up the flag for established holidays, things that are legitimate. We don't want people trying to take advantage of it with things that are nonsense. So we put together something saying if any governmental body has endorsed or passed or supports the holiday? Whether it's council or Congress or the state legislature or whatever? Then the process goes into them coming to me and requesting and, bless you. And generally, I expect to, to, to put it up unless there's some objection? Or unless there's too many flags on the pole, that's the other thing. So it gives it in my discretion as it's, as it already is, this lays out that process as we've discussed here. And I thank legal for their help and then council for their help as we kind of went through this a few months ago.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions from council? Councilman Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, for putting this together. You know, it has been quite a topic of conversation. We want to make sure that everyone has opportunity to be represented with dignity, respect and empowerment. So thank you for putting a policy so that way people have the process to walk forward in what they believe.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no further questions or comments, all those in favor, please state, oh, I'm sorry, Vice President Hussein.
I would move that, place on file.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. That's what I was looking for. Any additional comments? All right, seeing no comments, we have a proper motion. All those in favor, please state by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? All right, motion passes. And no additional business, we are adjourned at 6:43.